Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to a special meeting. Excuse me, special meeting of the Village of Northfield, October sixteenth, two thousand nineteen. Would you please stand for the pledge?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Mister Magistrelli, here. Mister Shier. Mister Shier?
Yes.
Yes. Miss Tomzloski?
Here.
Mister Hips?
Here.
Miss Nowak?
Here.
Mister Voitesh? Here. Mister Bryan?
Here.
At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Law Director, Mister Brad Bryan.
Okay, um, everyone, this is, as Mister Magistrelli said, this is a special council meeting. The purpose of the meeting is to hold a hearing on council's October ninth, two thousand nineteen motion to censure councilperson Chair pursuant to Village of Northfield Charter, Section four fifteen. And just so everyone understands the procedures, um, this will be a hearing. Council, um, is the people bringing the motion to censure will have the burden to present their case initially. And whoever wants to start, Mister Hips made the motion, so I don't know if he's going to take the lead in presenting the evidence. When he's done presenting what he wants to present and saying what he wants to say, Mister Shier has the right to ask Mister Hips questions about the issue. And when he's finished, anyone else can speak, um, counsel to the issue. Mister Shier will have the opportunity to ask them questions. And at that point, Mister Shier will be able to present his, um, whatever he wants to present. And people have a right to ask him questions. Once we're done with the hearing portion, um, council can adjourn into executive session to discuss the evidence and what, um, it wants to do. And at that point, come out of executive session and either not take it, choose to not take any action or choose to take action at that point in an opening part of the meeting. So, that's the procedures. If anyone has any questions, let me know.
Could I allow them to go into their executive session and they could make their decision? And after I present, after the public meeting, I permitted to leave the meeting at that point?
I, not sure I understand your question. You're saying if they're gonna go into executive session, if they take any action, they've gotta come out of executive session and do it in an open meeting. But you can leave at any time.
They could notify me by phone.
Sure, right, you're free.
Or notify me, email me, however you want me to do.
Yes, yes.
Yes, I would like very much to, uh, once I present and you guys go into executive session and figure it out on your own. And after you figure it out, then come on back out here. I, I don't wanna be here after I present.
Okay, understood. All right, Mister Hips.
Could I ask you one question?
Yes.
Do we, um, after we go into executive session, do we make our, uh, motions in our next council meeting? Or does, is it made tonight?
No, made tonight. Um, and then whatever the decision is, will be, I mean, if there is a decision to take any action, that'll be done in the next council meeting. Okay, Mister Hips, are you taking the lead on this?
I suppose.
Okay.
We can probably make this short and, short and sweet. Mister Shier, you did motion to censure yourself for the last council, or we've made the motion and you, you voted to censure yourself for the last council.
I did not even vote.
Uh, an abstention goes with the majority silence. We did not do a roll call vote. So, vote is six-six to censure you, so you're aware of that.
Well.
Uh, to give a timeline.
Well, again, and just to clarify, that wasn't, that was the motion to bring the, bring the censure action at the hearing. It wasn't to actually take actions.
You wanna cut to the chase, yeah, yeah.
So, to give a little timeline to how these videos kind of came out in the public. The August twenty-second, two thousand nineteen council meeting, Keith Shier brought up a, a incident with the village police. That video was posted on, uh, some social media sites and.
You posted it.
On the twenty-second, it was, twenty-seventh, it was posted on the Nordonia News website, which when you Googled Keith Shier to see that video, the rest of his videos come up with YouTube. One Google search of his name brings up all the videos. You can find those videos on YouTube and Facebook, or you could find those videos on YouTube and Facebook. So, throughout the next year, Mister Shier continues to bring up in council the videos. So, public gets out and starts Googling things. Uh, step into the campaign season, he's producing literature, putting it out on the street. People research, people post videos, maybe I posted a video, leads people to see it even more. We have the public show up at a council meeting, um, with complaints on September twenty-fifth. In that meeting, Mister Shier states that he would not apologize for the videos because he felt they were funny. He did the, after that meeting, he made those videos private or deleted them. In a letter to the editor on September twenty-seventh, Keith Shier issues his letter stating the videos are funny and essentially stating that, um.
Could you read that statement I wrote?
It's right here. Criticized for silly videos I've made in the past.
The whole, the whole retraction, please?
I've got the screenshot that is pertaining to.
Why do you not have the whole retraction there?
Because I've got the proof of evidence of where it came from there in the title.
You, you should read the whole letter that I wrote. Don't read parts.
All right, Mister Shier.
I'm presenting my evidence.
Let him present what he wants to present, then you can ask him whatever questions you want. Point out whatever you want afterward.
Criticized for the silly videos I've made in the past. These harmless videos were meant to bring joy, not hatred. All the videos I've made are not meant to be taken seriously, and if I've offended anyone, I apologize. I treat everyone with the utmost respect and decency. There's your apology. Meant to be silly and bring joy. Let's look at some of your posts. This is just showing you provenance, there's YouTube. Mister Shier post, Mister Shier post, this is you wearing the skeleton mask.
What does it say?
This one is about guitar lessons.
The what?
About guitar lessons. I'm just showing provenance for where the videos came from on YouTube.
Is that guitar lesson?
Just listen.
Could you play it?
Just listen, I cannot play this, this is a screen capture from YouTube.
Okay.
This video shows you wearing a skeleton mask, holding up fingers with your name posting it. Here is a video of you dressed in a skeleton mask. This will play. I can restart it with the recorder if you'd like.
Well, they arrested me for assault. Uh, I said, "What assault, what do you mean assault?" Well, you, you know, you, you, you went to your girlfriend and she pressed charges against you. And I said, "For what?" And she was like, "Well, they're, they're thinking about federal charges and, uh, you know." I thought, "You were?" Oh, my goodness. Well, anyway, just to let you know, uh, she, I, she told me, she, she told me when we was, you know, a little bit of a. Don't, don't, uh, don't, 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 don't stop. And here again, she meant for me not to stop. Let's say, uh, "Don't stop or don't stop." "Don't." And I said, "Don't stop her." And so, I assumed she was happy. I told her, "Don't, don't stop, just don't." But what she really meant was, "Don't stop." And, and I told the judge, I said, "Judge, you're hired." That arraignment that is. I said, "Judge, you're hired." She said, "Don't stop." And I, what would you do if, if you're gonna tell you, "Don't stop." "Don't stop." Well, I don't know what she meant by that because, well, anyway, hold on a second. Yeah, ma? No, just, uh, talking to my friends. Yeah. You had your girlfriend badly lose? Okay, uh, um, don't tell me she wants me to rub oil on her again today. Tell her I had enough trouble at my arraignment and that my lawyer wants to reclaim her. Anyway, uh, now, can I tell you that? All right, I'm talking to my friends. Anyway, just to let you know. Well, besides that, they make underwear in foreign countries and they don't even last ten years like they used to. But besides that, you, you have a girl, she said, "Don't stop, don't stop." And I think that she didn't want me to stop her, and she really meant stop. Well, I didn't know that, you know? Well, anyway, I'm facing like three years for, you know, 'cause I didn't stop. Anyway, thanks for your time, thanks.
This is a video that you call silly. Uh, essentially describes sexual assault or rape. Second piece, this is not live, this video's been deleted.
What does that mean? What does it say?
This video is Juan Keithy and Passing Gas, posted by Mister Shier on Juan Keithy's Facebook page. Um, in this video, you describe, uh, women farting in a rating scale, uh, for how to pick a wife. So, the do's and don'ts and when to fart, essentially. Bit of information here, again, shared on public Facebook.
No, 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 no. There is no.
What does this say right here? Keith Shier, shared a post.
I don't see where you, that's, that, I don't have nothing to do with that, whatever.
This isn't a video that you made, but this is a video that you posted right here.
I did not share that video, Mister.
Uh, right there, May September thirty.
Somebody hacked my, uh, my account.
The hack, the hack excuse, we've heard this before on, on YouTube.
Well, I, I share none of that stuff. And I don't see where, what, what, who put that, those words up there like that?
It's the start of the video that you shared, Mister Shier.
No, no, I'm sorry, I'm gonna deny that, whatever that is. There's, I never seen any.
Well, you'll have your time, so just, just hang on here. So, as you can see, there's a fair bit of evidence.
Whose video was that anyway that you got?
It doesn't much matter.
Oh, I wanna know whose video that was.
You posted this.
I didn't, I didn't post that.
Right there.
No.
Mister Shier, let him.
Search in Keith Shier's photos, post and photos, Keith Shier, shared a post. Right there you go.
No, no.
Pretty clear evidence.
No, that's not.
You can refute anything that you want, it's up to council to decide on the evidence. Um, so that's, that's the, the public evidence that's been out. Um, most of the videos have been deleted or turned private at this point, so you're probably not gonna be able to see them. Uh, he did that after the council meeting where he was pretty much lambasted for them. Not much more to say about it other than I would, judging by the reactions on people's faces here, they may, may or may not have seen it.
Yeah.
Thinking that it's pretty despicable.
The.
I'm gonna, I've talked with the police department, fire department, and service department. Nearly everybody on those departments has seen those videos. Nearly everybody in those departments has seen those videos.
Nobody told me about these videos? Directify this?
They're on your YouTube page, they're on your personal YouTube page.
The point, point I'm bringing across is, I, they've been on my, whatever, the, those things are, were on there. Those, those videos are five, six, seven years old.
Two, but.
No, it's not two years old.
Besides.
Come on now, you, you had plenty of a chance. The thing is, is how did you upload those? Did you just hit a button or something?
All right, hold on. So, Mister Hips, are you finished?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you, did you, uh, did you record them? Like, did you use another piece of apparatus to record them? Or how did you record those?
On my phone from YouTube and hit the record button on my phone.
Okay.
Cause I didn't have any other way to download from YouTube.
So, so you recorded them, and, uh, what I'm gonna ask you now is, uh, even after my, uh, retraction, I wanna know why you still advertise that? Then you know it was wrong?
You did not retract it.
Oh, I did.
You've never retracted these videos, you've made a lame excuse for your actions, said it was funny, and you were sorry if anybody was offended.
Well, I, I produced, I produced the video with the skull guy. I don't know what your, uh, I don't know what the other videos are all about. I never had anything to do with those.
The one TV video with the guitars in the background.
Passing gas one, in the guitar video, yeah, I, I do the guitar video, yes. Okay, so what do we do now?
Are you aware that that's cultural appropriation and, uh, racist?
I have something to say, too. You go ahead, I'm, I'm, uh, gonna tell you again, like in my retraction letter.
All right, Keith, are you asking him a question or?
No, I, I would like to make my statement.
All right, if you can hold off until, is anyone else on council have anything to say here? Cause I'm on this topic. I do, I do. Alan, do you know what the date was on that video?
On this video?
Yes.
It was around the same time as these. It was two years ago. Sorry, I can't zoom in.
There, there's no way they were two years ago. No, it's not on council.
Two years ago, two years ago.
But those are guitar lesson videos. And, and, um, okay, well, are you, anybody else got anything?
Did that mention a, a montagne?
No, it did not.
Anyone else on council? Uh, yes, that's the second time I've seen that. I'm embarrassed. I, I, I really don't know what to say. I mean, I know some things are posted as a joke or, um, but it's, uh, I, I'm not a Facebook kinda guy. I don't, uh, I don't hang out on Facebook, so I don't post things or have things posted. If it's shown to me, it's shown to me because someone else had shown it to me and, uh, um, Mister Shier, the, 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 the only, um, history that you and I have is right here. The council.
Yeah.
I was very surprised. I, I was very surprised. Yeah, you know, and, and I know that when there's, um, four or five guys together and they're sitting in the living room or sitting on a stool, silly and stupid things come out. But this wasn't the case. And, uh, I, I don't really know what to say as a, except, I'm, I'm embarrassed. I'm, um, for myself and for you. I, I, I never would've expected that, um, when I met you and as long as we've been on this council together. And, um, I apologize to, uh, Northfield Village. I apologize to, uh, everyone that's seen this, this video. And whether it was done in just, or it was just done was wrong, and I apologize. Thank you. Okay, anybody else?
Keith, just like Nick said, it, it's pretty much just been with here that we've known each other. And we've always gotten along, no problems, I've always been able to help you where I can. With you running for mayor four years ago, you saw in yourself that you wanted to be a part of this community, that you wanted to give back. And with knowing that, I don't know if it was two years ago, if it was four years ago or anything like that, but common sense would be for you to know that you are in the public eye. And that you have to make decisions that are gonna reflect yourself as well as people in the village that are gonna say, "Look at this, and this guy wants to run for something." I'm not saying, you know, chastising you in any way, but is, it was a bad decision on your part? If you were thinking four years ago that you wanted to be mayor, and then you came on council? And then you started hearing, I don't know when you started hearing about these videos. This is the first, I've heard about them, but this is the first time I've seen it.
How long have you known about it, Mister Hips?
I've known about it for about a year.
Okay, well, I think, no, don't, don't answer that question, just keep on going.
But I just want you to know that you, you need, if you want to be a part of this village, you need to reflect what pride this village wants. And that is not a reflection of what this village wants.
Um, I see, this is a very hot topic on social media, and it has been. And I stated, I usually say nothing, um, but I had stated that I feel a lot of this has come to light due to the fact that you are running, um, for the mayor seat. And so, that is why, you know, people will put you under the microscope and, and say, "Are you, are you fit? Are you fit to do it?" I mean, there's been, social media is dangerous, first of all, but there's been plenty of times where I've saw something and I'm like, "Oh, I'm gonna share that." I'm like, "Yeah, no, maybe not, no, maybe I shouldn't." You know, and, and your first reaction sometimes is to share something. You know, like you're scrolling along and like it made you chuckle and you're like, you go to hit that button, you're like, "Oh, no." Um, because you have to, you kinda gotta think six steps ahead sometimes, you know? Who, who is gonna hate this and think that a bad person for it? You know, and it doesn't mean that you are a bad person, but somebody's gonna be like, "Uh, what'd you do that for?" I think the, 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 the post that I had actually commented on was in regards to, um, the police video, how that had come up again. And it came up, it probably would've anyways, but it, it, it came to light quickly because you had written a letter, um, you know, it, talking about it. And so, when Nordonia Hills', um, news outlet posted your letter to the editor, the video was attached. So, it gave the public another chance to see that. And, and so, that's why that one came up again, and then these were surfacing, and so those kind, they all kinda tied together and, you know, I think, I think it wouldn't be as bad if it was just handled differently, you know? If, if someone had said, "These offended me," or "How dare you," or, or just whatever they said. I think where the second mistake happened was when you said you were not gonna apologize. And I, I think that really, really upset a lot of people. You know, and, and, you know, like Alan said, you had, you did go and you took some down or made them private or whatever, and that's, that's fine, and that was good. But I think that was after, and that's why everyone was so angry. I could be wrong. You know, I mean, I, I, I very well could be wrong, but I, you know, I think that's just how the events kinda played out and how things escalated. So, I just, you know, and, I mean, this is a mess. But I just, I want you to, you know, maybe just think about that, like just how the domino effect kind of occurred. That's all.
All right, anybody else? Okay.
Okay, I have something to say. Or unless Mister Valtuich wants to speak. Yeah, you, you can speak.
I also, like Jen, feel that, uh, because of the time of year it is, this is why this has come up. But the bigger question that I have with all of these is this, the video on the screen shows us a couple of years ago. Mister Shier's saying he did this five, six, or seven years ago. Mister Shier was appointed by the mayor when he first came in. I wonder why these videos were never looked at back then. It, it just makes me wonder what really happened and, and makes me think about all that stuff, so. I know we all make mistakes, like, like I said in the last council meeting, but this is, I don't know why it was left where it was if it was there six years ago. Thank you.
Um, I, I want you to know that the person that that video comes from is a person I used to work with over at the casino. Well, actually, it's been about two and a half years ago.
Which, which video?
Uh, the one that you said I allegedly shared.
This video?
That one. He might've put it on my, on my, uh, that video was put on, but I, I didn't share that one. That could be, that's a screenshot or whatever it is.
Share.
The point is, I don't want you to speak so I can talk right now. Chris Rock, Eddie Murphy, Richard Pryor, Kevin Newhart, Martin Lawrence. They all get up on the stage and they talk. They talk about very sensitive issues and they refer to their friends in a derogatory manner, the way that, what this quote or whatever it was, the same way Mister Tuan Bressi did. Mister Tuan Bressi is a very funny person, I enjoy his company. That was something that he put on my thing, and I gotta tell you, I still would say that he's a lot of fun. He's funny as these people, Richard Pryor, I could name them all. They get up there on the stage and you laugh at them, you go pay money to see them. And then, uh, but then my friend, Tuan Bressi, who's just as funny as the rest of these, Kevin Hart, Martin Lawrence, Richard Pryor, Eddie Murphy, Chris Rock, they all use the term, it's derogatory. But they do, and you pay to see them. Now, that is that. That was put on my wall and I watched it, I didn't share it with you, that's for sure. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna address the, address, address council now with what I have to say. It came to my attention that a councilperson by the name of Alan Hips at a regular council meeting has moved to censor me for con, conduct unbecoming. And his reason, as he, as stated, was because videos I posted five years ago was inappropriate. And due to sensitive nature, Mister Hips also gave reference to women's issues of rape at that meeting and senuated that I, Keith Shier, was an advocate for rape. When asked what videos he was speaking of and what were the titles of these alleged vi, videos, he first evaded the question, and then Mister Hips blurted out, "Stroking the Monkey." For the record, I never titled any of my videos, "Stroking the Monkey." At this point, I was never told of any other titles of any other such videos that I would advocate rape. So, to prepare for a censoring meeting is nearly impossible. He had played an audio version over the PA system that was no, so distorted, I could not possibly figure it out what Mister Hips was referring. I produced several satire videos over the years, some of which were uploaded on websites where it is impossible for me to remember the email address, let alone the passcode to change, modify, or even to delete. Counsel, the, the definition of satire is attached on the back of this letter as a part of this packet of information. Counsel, you will find a copy of the First Amendment to the United States Constitution. It is also attached to this letter and is a part of the packet of information. Counsel, you will also find a retraction letter that I, Keith Shear, posted with the news media. Counsel, also, I will remind everyone that sits on council person's seat that you yourself swore to an oath of office that protects our unalienable rights, which, at this point, I am flat out accusing anyone here involved with these proceedings of violating at least one of my unalienable rights. Mr. Hips, you have proclaimed that what I produced was offensive sexist and, oh, blackface. Online, you made this announcement. I did my best to eliminate these so-called videos. I mentioned the silly videos in my letter of retraction and apologized to anyone it may have offended. And even ironic how videos that were online for several years before I sat on any seat of government was never brought up to me to rectify. And now ironically, during campaigning for the mayor, you get it out there. And even after you found these videos inappropriate, you, Mr. Hips, and a person I never spoke to prior to this issue perpetuate the circumstance by even producing and posting videos that I deleted. So in reality, the people that you, Mr. Hips, are trying to protect and you want to express, expose them to what actually you actually believe is harmful to people you mentioned in that meeting. And that have been exposed to so-called alleged abuse. So I will say this out loud, that in itself makes you contradict what you really say you believe. There was a video, a satire video, made for the amusement. The video was produced about eight years ago. It was in reference and added to a video that came from somewhere in Africa. My auntie shared this video with me. It showed a chimpanzee and men. One of the men hand over to the chimp an automatic weapon with a full clip of ammunition. The chimp goes crazy with the automatic weapon, the men take cover. While the chimp empties the magazine, my video was titled, Gun Control and Spanking the Monkey, Not Stroking the Monkey, as you, Mr. Hips, announced at the meeting. Did you ever get spanked, Mr. Hips? Were you ever naughty and received a spanking for mischief? Well, you are the one who announced something totally out of context. That is your warped mind. Most of my videos, videos are satire. The spider monkey at the shoe store had a pencil and attempted to poke a three-year-old's eye out from the cage. Monkey needed a spanking. The monkey with the automatic weapon needed a spanking. Satire, Mr. Hips, a way to make folks laugh. And if you want to make something dirty, you want to violate everyone's rights, you want to tell them how to cut their grass, you, where they must keep their trash cans, how high their signs must go, and you want to tell me and others what you think is inappropriate, and you and another person with the name of Donna Kramer, who lives very close to the proximity of our present mayor, and even want to make me YouTube famous, quote, shame on you. This letter also includes a picture of my daughter with her brand-new baby. How dare you insinuate that I am an advocate for rape? How dare you? I am with my mother at this one, this one issue. Now, don't misquote me on this, another little satire, my friend, from my mom's mouth. They should take all the murderers and rapists and let them go right out the top-story window of the terminal tower. If they land on their feet and they're okay, then let them go. Satire. Is she wrong? Maybe she is, maybe she isn't. But that is how she feels about the circumstance, and you are going to censor her for having feelings. Counsel, you did not give me enough time to prepare, prepare for this meeting, so I included this packet. Some issues that have come up in some of your past that should also need some explaining. Now, it is not my opinion from what kind of things that I found and including in it, it is none, it in, it in that, none of you that sit on this council have any right whatsoever to pass judgment on me. And Mr. Hips, your resume has been one of the best. I de- I declare now, this attack on me personally is part of a smear campaign, defamation of my good character, and flat-out unbecoming of a councilperson. I do not believe that, believe you it. I believe you thought you did, you did not think it out before you proceeded. And I truly believe that you should resign your seat as a councilperson. And a P S, remember this, remember, Mr. Hips, you swore to an oath of office to protect our constitutional rights and not to destroy our rights. And I'm going to tell you, I have a packet here for all of you, and I want you to look at it. And I want you to look at it and understand, I'm serious. Now, there's no satire. I'm telling you, I never meant to hurt anyone. And I can't, can't, I don't even know the email address for half of those videos. So if I had videos out, you should have told me before you appointed me in this seat. I don't want to talk to anybody anymore about it. There's no more questions. I'd like to be able to give everyone here their packets of information, and I would like to pretty much let you decide what you want to do on your own. I would very much not want to talk and ask questions. I am very, very upset and I'm very ill right now. I'm sorry, but I'm very ill because I think there's hypocrisy going on over here. I didn't do, I don't have the time to go look on all your posts, Mr. Hips, to see that if you shared something that was inappropriate. I'm just telling you, my videos were simply to bring joy, not hatred, and that's inherent too. I don't want anybody to hate anybody. I love everybody for who they are, what they are. It doesn't matter to me. I don't care how tall they are, how short they are, what color they are, none of that. Don't put that on me. Don't try to put that. Don't you color that painting around me. I could tell you another story. Let me tell you a story about rape. This is about a fourteen-year-old boy. A fourteen-year-old boy going to school in the school system that sponsored an event called Fifty's Day, where everybody wore pleated skirts, they wore patent little shoes, they wore, uh, bobby socks, they had jeans rolled up and they had cigarettes in their pack and they greased their hair back. But this one fourteen-year-old boy, one hundred and ten pounds, soaking wet, one hundred and ten pounds, had long hair way down past his shoulders. And he didn't like Fifty's Day. He didn't like the way they did it, but he would not partake. But four big giant seniors, twice his size, each one of them, drug him into the bathroom before his algebra class and proceeded to put grease, motor oil, whatever they could find that was greasy and nasty. That poor boy composed himself, got up in the mirror and wiped his face off clean and combed his hair back with his comb and composed himself, went to his algebra class and then to his English class. And after that, he went home and his mama told him, don't make waves. Don't do anything about this. Don't, we're not going to bother with this. He couldn't get the grease like a duck or a swan that's in a, in a ocean that gets an oil spill where they put Dawn on him. He washed his hair fifteen, twenty times. The grease and the used motor oil and the gear oil, whatever was in his hair, wouldn't come out. So he had to get a butch haircut. All his hair was cut off. He didn't live his life like a normal child for three years after that until he became a senior. And he grew, he grew up. He, he didn't go to one football game, although he loved football his junior high. He went to every football game. He never went to a football game. The school and the school board sponsored this event that allowed this to happen, allowed this boy to be raped in the bathroom by his algebra class. And then when he grew up, when that boy grew up, you, does somebody think it's funny? I hope you don't. When, when that boy grew up, he taught his little girl, he taught his little girl how to make a fest and nine up the knuckles and said, if anybody bothers, baby, looky here. This is your, this is a man's Adam's apple. And all you got to do with a man and his Adam's apple, if he bothers you one time, you could, if he's doing what you don't want him to do, you just punch that Adam's apple as hard as you can and he'll leave you alone. And he also told that his son, when they were picking on a small boy, half the size of the regular kids, he told him, come here, listen, son, you don't ever, you never, you never had to take part in beating up on that kid and putting him down. You stand on his side. You stand on his bandwagon. You be his friend because he'll remember it when he's forty, he'll remember it when he's fifty, he'll remember it for the rest of his life. That's what that small, one hundred and ten-pound boy that was forced into the bathroom told his son later on. And now, things haven't changed. You still got your football player buffoons over here, different, different time, different place. Somebody does this, so if you go on and giggle, you think it's funny? You think that story's funny? Because I'm going to tell you about that story. That was me growing up. And now, back to it. And you know how you guys been in the last ten council meetings? If I don't agree with you, you just say, you, you got your way of doing things. I tell you something at a work session, you don't listen to what I say, you just do what you want to do anyway. And then you say, oh, he doesn't agree. The, the things, my issues are simple. My issues are simple and they don't put that big of a dent into our budget. And you guys, I'm not going to say all of you, because I don't want to say that, but there are some pretty arrogant people up here who think they're better than the rest of the planet. And that's all I have to say. Is, am I able to leave now at this time?
You're free to leave whenever you want.
You could decide whatever you want to do. That boy that I'm talking about, that was me. That was me, losing three years of my childhood, never going to a football game. That was me. And if you think I'm an advocate for rape, Mr. Hips, you got another thing coming. You better never say that about me. Never.
Does anyone else have anything to say? And just to clarify, um, the videos that were identified at the time of the motion, I wrote them down. That the Wong Keefe passing gas video, spanking the monkey was mentioned, Mr. Shear, those were the words.
Well, the, the, the words that Mr. Hips said, stroking the monkey, it was gun control and spanking the monkey. And if any, if there's any other title besides that, it was not.
I wrote down spanking the monkey and then Scully's sexual assault, three things I wrote down.
This packet contains, contains other indiscretions, and they're also mine.
Okay, all right, is everyone?
I'm going to give everybody, wait, let me make sure you got it all. So when you go back, you think about what I'm saying, because I'm, I'm not just a picture. No, no, don't pass it down. I'll hand each and every one of you a copy of this, to make sure you got it. I want you to, before you make your decision, you read all this stuff here, Mr. Hips. Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I know my resume, thanks.
You, you don't know.
I know my resume, thanks.
All right, it's not the time to argue.
Let's have a meeting up at the scoreboards afterwards, huh? We could all get together, guys. That's what happened the last time.
It's not, it's not correct, Mr. Shear.
Mr. Hips? I want to give this to the news media also.
All right, is, is it council's desire to go into executive session? Mr. Magistrelli?
Yes, Mr. Magistrelli.
Okay, and if someone will make a motion to, um, hang on, to go into executive session to discuss the censure complaint and possible, possible disciplinary action against a public official relating to the above censure motion. Making the motion, Mr. Magistrelli?
Make a motion.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Noack. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Ms. Noack?
Yes.
Mr. Voitish?
Yes.
Mr. Magistrelli?
Yes.
Mr. Hips?
Yes.
Ms. Msalski?
Yes.
All right, we are in executive session, and I think it would be easier if council, we, we leave and go to the back rather than. Motion by Ms. Msalski, seconded by Mr. Hips, Ms. Noack?
Yes.
Mr. Voitish?
Yes.
Mr. Magistrelli?
Yes.
Mr. Hips?
Yes.
Ms. Msalski?
Yes.
Okay, we're back in the special meeting, public portion of the special meeting. Does anyone have a motion to make? I was just, wait, hang on, we came out of executive session at seven forty-three.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to censor councilperson Zare for conduct unbecoming in elected official for the production and posting a public view of videos containing accrued content related to the sexual assault of women and racially offensive generalizations and stereotypes. Sanctioning Mr. Zare with loss of council pay for four months and removal from all committees for the balance of two thousand nineteen.
Okay, motion's made by Ms. Noack. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Magistrelli. Any discussion on the motion? And we'll take a vote on the motion. Ms. Noack?
Yes.
Mr. Voitish?
Yes.
Mr. Magistrelli?
Yes.
Mr. Hips?
Yes.
Ms. Msalski?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is adopted. The censure resolution will be read at the next regular council meeting. And, uh, does someone have a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn, please, second.
Motion by Ms. Msalski, seconded by Ms. Noack to adjourn. All in favor of the motion?
Yes.
All opposed? Okay, adjourned at seven forty-four. And we apologize to everyone waiting for the planning commission meeting. We will be ready to start that right away.